Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Mayor police.
Here. I declare a court of present. Please stand, join in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I need a motion to approve the minutes of January fifteen, two thousand and fifteen. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions or corrections? And Alderman Roy Wesley is...
I don't want to, Alderman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Next, do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Yes, sir, if you can go to the podium and state your name and address. Thank you, sir.
My name is Wilfredo Trejo, one sixty-two Paramount Drive, Wooddale, Illinois, six oh one nine one. I'm here because I filed a complaint regarding the feeding of wild animals. The address that's feeding him is one sixty-three Paramount Drive. I've taken pictures, I've documented. And initially, I filed my first formal complaint back in August. I subsequently filed a second complaint, and nothing has been done about that yet. And it's just created a nuisance and a horrible problem with the geese, the raccoons, the skunks, and other animals that feed in that area, in that property, one sixty-three Paramount. She has bird feeders out, and she feeds wild animals. She puts feed on the ground also. And that's why I'm here today. I have pictures and video.
Okay.
John, if you have any update, I think it's an active file, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Forrest.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Manager. Correspondence has been sent to the appropriate party, given her a certain amount of days to comply. Property was re-inspected. Unfortunately, it was after the snowfall, so we couldn't really see what the conditions were. But we did take some additional photos, and we are moving forward with enforcement on that.
Okay.
I'd like to state that... Yes, during the snowfall, I was cleaning out there, and I saw her come out and put more food down.
Mr. Bond.
Yeah, and I'm the city attorney, and the department is also working with us to address that. There's some code provisions that that would be a violation of, so the concerns are being addressed. There is a process, and you have to afford them notice, and then they have an opportunity to correct the violation before the city can move forward with that. So that's the stage that we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Is there... Do you need the videos or the pictures?
Mr. Forrest.
We have photos on file.
Okay.
Our inspectors have taken, but if you want to copy us, those pictures for the file, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Is bird feeders illegal in the city?
Mr. Forrest.
Bird feeders are not illegal in the city. We do have some questions that, again, have to be answered by the city attorney as to whether or not it's legal to install bird feeders on trees that are in the city parkway.
Okay.
Yeah, the parkway is a part of the street right away, and it's considered public property, and so they're not permitted there.
I just thought maybe I had to take mine down to my backyard.
Well, you do, yes.
All right. Any other citizens who wish to be heard? All right, I do have one written communicate. It's from the Bensonville-Wooddale Football Cheerleading Association. They just, again, want to say, "Thank you for the generous donations, and without our support, they would not be able to provide the youth of our communities the essential tools needed to run a program." Just a thank you letter. Okay, next up is the movies. Movies in the Park. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, you may remember, a couple of weeks ago, the Park District Executive Director had reached out to me and had asked me to query the council on if they'd be willing to participate in a joint Movies in the Park program for the upcoming summer season. I did field some questions from the council that they had. I have some answers. One of the questions was, "Will the Park District consider a fourth movie?" As originally, they were only considering three, and the city used to always do four. They indicated that they would. They would also staff that event if we wanted them to. Would the Park District be open to alternate dates? They indicated that they would. However, they want to start getting the dates out soon, so they can advertise in their material. They asked... The council had asked me about mosquito control. The city has already built in, in our contract, for spraying of things like Prairie Fest and our movie series, as we typically have the movie series. But it's in this contract for the movie series, so mosquito abatement would be covered by us. Those were some of the questions that the council had submitted to me. At this time, they're looking for sponsorship for the four movies. And I have the dates, at least three of the dates, so I would need some feedback if we want to...
What, you mean sponsorship?
Well, to pay for the cost to license the movie, and then they would staff the event.
I have one other question.
Go ahead, Mr. Alderman.
But I think I'll take it offline with Jeff later.
But I think we're looking for some...
Yeah, I need some direction tonight, if we want to do the program.
All right. Let me ask my question. So, my question is, over here, we allow people to bring wine or beer to see a movie on our property. Okay? So are we allowing that to happen over there? Or are they going to be totally strict about that?
I'll let the chief of police talk about alcohol enforcement in the park.
Go ahead, Chief.
Thank you, sir. I hate to defer, but I don't believe the Park District will allow open alcohol in their parks. And it would probably be against our liquor code, too.
Mr. Lazara. Alderman Lazara.
Thank you. The Park District will allow beer or wine as long as you come in for a permit. Because if you, like, for instance, the baseball association, if you want to have beer on the premises, which is France and Grove, we will give you a permit for that. "We" meaning when I was part of the...
Right, I remember when I was with... When my kids were in youth baseball, right, the baseball organization went to the Park District.
Right.
But I know when they had... Used to have their music in the park, they did not allow it. So I'm not sure if they would, resident for resident. I'm not sure that would work. That would be a question for the Park District, I guess. Mr. Bond.
And they would need... Because the liquor licensing, even if it's a temporary event, still would be... Need city approval.
Do you have anything further? Alderman Jacob.
I have a quick question for the city manager. With the mosquito abatement, that's not going to be a problem, since it's Park District property and not city property?
Mr. Mermis.
No, I had spoken to their executive director, and they're looking to partnership in any way that they can, and it's not going to be an issue.
Follow. So you're looking for direction?
Looking for direction to... It wouldn't not to exceed fifteen hundred?
I'll make the motion approved in a second.
We have a motion and a second for fifteen hundred. Alderman Eugene Wesley and Alderman Jacob, second. Any other questions on that? Roll call.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Next, I'd like to thank Mr. York and his staff for keeping our roads passable during the blizzard, and the police chief for having his office, as I know was a trying time for both groups as far as the blizzard goes, our sixth worst event in, I guess, our history, from what I understand. Next, city manager report. Do you have any? Okay. Consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve.
I make that motion.
A second.
Any questions or removal? Alderman Woods.
I'd like to remove item one.
Remove item one, okay. And... And Alderman Jacob, Alderman Lazara, I'm sure you're okay with that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Now entertain a motion to approve item number two. Approval and agreement for the repairs to Booster Pump eleven in a not-to-exceed amount of eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, committee chairman reports. Planning and zoning, Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two reports. An ordinance proposing a development plan on project four and the designation of Thorndale Corridor tax increment financing redevelopment project area and the adoption of tax increment allocation financing, therefore conveying a joint review board and calling a public hearing in connection therewith.
And that is your motion?
That is my motion.
Second.
Do have one question. Should we have the dates in the motion? Mr. Bond, or is that okay without?
Yeah, no, it's okay. It's in the ordinance.
Okay. All right, well, I knew. I just wanted to make sure. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
Next report is an ordinance granting an amendment... Addendum to a development agreement between the city of Wooddale and Memory Care LLC. That is my motion.
Second.
Any questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That is the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Roy Wesley.
No report.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Lazara.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three. First one is a resolution seeking to approve a utility easement over city property with Commonwealth Edison and Illinois Bell Telephone Company doing business as SBC Ameritech, Illinois, for one oh nine Irving Park Road. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Who will second that?
Mr. Catalano.
Any questions on this? Mr. Mermis.
Both items, one and two, are around the area of the intersection, Clock Garden area. It's for the project.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Number two, a resolution seeking to approve a utility easement over city property with Commonwealth Edison and Illinois Bell Telephone Company doing business as SBC Ameritech, Illinois, for three oh eight, three eighteen Wooddale Road. That is my motion.
Do I have a second? Any questions on this one? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
Number three, a resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the city of Wooddale and the Illinois Department of Transportation for the intersection safety project on Wooddale Road and Irving Park Road in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Is it that seven hundred... That's coming out of the grant money that we received in the...
Mr. Mermis.
Kind of. A little bit of a complex question. Basically, this is for the safety improvement project. We can't proceed unless we pass this agreement. The number of the city's contributions theoretically through grant funding, the seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and the agreement says it's the city's contribution, but that contribution's going to change and be lower. There will be some component of city contribution, because remember, we had the added water main component, and we have the streetscaping component, so that was all lumped into the project now. So...
So what is...
This number would theoretically come down, but we can't proceed until we pass it as this number right now.
So...
Go ahead.
Do we have any idea what our number's going to be on this?
Mr. Mermis.
Our number would be somewhere in the vicinity of what we budgeted for in the CIP for the streetscape improvements and for the water main within the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
And that's the end of my report.
Okay, finance and administration, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, we will go back to item one first. Approval of purchase of license plate reader in a not-to-exceed amount of twenty-four thousand, ninety-five dollars. I need a motion.
So move.
Second.
First and a second. Do we have any questions?
Of course.
Alderman Woods.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one question. First, I've spent quite a bit of time going over this, and I want to thank the chief, because he spent quite a bit of time with me reviewing the operating procedure for the system. I have no complaint with the system. What it does, performs an excellent police function as far as... If the only thing it did was download hot plates and criminal activity plates and stuff like that, I would absolutely have no problem with it. But the fact that it stores information is where I have the problem. So it's not the system. It's just the storage of information. And we kind of ran out of time. I think the biggest contention now would be the amount of time that we store data. I think the chief's maximum time is ninety days. I personally would like to see that lower. I don't know that I'm going to get it there, but just on that principle alone, I personally can't vote for it, and that's the only reason I pulled it off. But I do... I do want to say, it is a valuable tool for what it does. There's just one aspect, and that's the data collection part that we have to be concerned with. And again, I want to thank the chief for all the time he's spent with me and help. We did make some changes and came to some agreement on some other verbiage and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question, Alderman Wesley?
Does that mean we can't change it and that we make it less, or is that a...
Chief?
A policy, or is that a... I mean, I was just asking.
I think some of the discussion is automatic purging of entry of manual plates that are... Have been approved by a supervisor for inclusion for investigation compared to a thirty-day deletion of hits that... Reads that we do while we're out there. Because certainly, some of our crimes aren't noticed or discovered by victims for... You might start to see a trend emerging over a two- or three-week period. So the general read data, we're looking at thirty days. Manual entry, when we have a specific reason, we're looking at a certain plate. We'd like to keep in there for ninety days pending deletion. And then they would have to resubmit to get it approved to be put back into the system again if it goes beyond ninety days. So there's some difference of opinion. The thirty days is on the lower end of what a lot of towns are doing. There's some that are doing no time or twenty-four hours. So to a long way get around here question, we can adjust it. We look at all our policies on a regular basis and change it based on what we experience.
So I do a follow-up?
Yes, go ahead.
So my question is, your staff came up with to hold the data for ninety days. Am I correct?
Chief.
We looked at a lot of other policies that are out there. And what we do, you know, we have a number of cameras around the station. We have audio and video recordings that take place on our cars. The... Those are kept anywhere from thirty to ninety days, depending on what type of system it is. The cameras that we have in lockup are usually kept about thirty days. After that, they purge. But sometimes, we don't know for two or three weeks that a... That an attorney is requesting lockup video. And so it would be the same thing with reads, is we like to have some time... Period of time that we have data, but we don't want to hold it forever, because we don't have an interest in knowing what someone did two years ago unless there's an active, ongoing criminal investigation.
You have a follow-up? All right, thank you. Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just for clarification, I think that... My concern is that the reader reads all the plates going by and stores them. We had specific conversation on those that you input, which I had concerns. I think you kind of addressed those, and we changed some verbiage. So I'm okay with that. If there's a legitimate police purpose, those could remain in... Those can last in there for two years or five years. I don't care. It's the collection of all the other plates. Let's use the term innocent people or non-criminal people, which is the larger portion of the data. That's my concern. I think all the other things you addressed the best you could address. And I don't... I don't know how to address the other ones, other than I personally can't vote for that system that collects that much data and holds it that long.
Chief?
Sure, I was just going to say, we have a difference of opinion on that, and it's okay. You know, we find that sometimes, two or three weeks down the road, all of a sudden, we realize that a couple of crimes have occurred in a certain area. We like to be able to go back and either look at video from a train station or LPR data to say, well, hey, this car was seen around that area during three of them. It doesn't make them guilty, but it gives us a reason to look further into something. So it's just... It's a difference of opinion, and I respect that.
Same here.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
So we're voting to keep it the way it is?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
No.
And that passes. Next, under other business, do we have a report for the stormwater committee?
I do, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
I have two motions. The first one was, city council should discuss whether the use of coal tar-based ceilings should be allowed in the city. So I think they would like to have us put that on our agenda.
I think Mr. Mermis is making a note of that for committee... Okay.
Okay. The second one is, the city should gain Metro's cooperation in maintaining or improving drainage in the railroad right-ofways.
I know, we've been working on that one, and we finally got them to clean... What was it, last year or the year before? That only took four years, I think. Mr. Mermis?
Yeah, I don't think we need to place that on a committee agenda, obviously. We've been working on that for years, similar to our relationship with ComEd. When they get around to it, they get around to it. It's not like we haven't been working on it, so that's ongoing.
Right, and I do...
Go ahead.
Believe that the stormwater committee understands how important that right-ofway and that drainage is to the city. I've actually spoke to Senator Tom Colleton in regards to this, and he says that he does know some people at the railroad and that he would discuss this matter with them. So I'm kind of expecting a report back from him, and I'll let, of course, the council know about that, as well as the stormwater committee. Thank you. End of my report.
Thank you. O'Hare Noise, Alderman Jacob.
Yeah, just... This is a new committee. Just want to let everybody know, we're having meetings on the second Monday of every month at seven PM. Basically, it's to communicate with the residents of what's going on with O'Hare Airport. We have people on our committee, one that attends the fair events, so she's giving us updates on that. One of them goes to the ONCC meeting, so that person will be giving us updates there. We have one person doing political outreach. Alderman Wesley's on the committee with me. He's on the sound installation board, so he's giving updates on that. And then we have one going to the county meetings. Currently, we have two Aldermen and seven residents on the group. And last meeting, we had four homeowners come and sit and listen, and we're giving them time to talk at the end of our meetings. So it's a new thing. We're going to be putting something in the newsletter, as well as on the website. So lots of things will be happening with it in the upcoming future. We've only had two meetings thus far.
All right, thank you. All right, next, approval of list of bills, February five, two thousand and fifteen, Alderman Wesley.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the bills for four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, thirty-one cents. That is my motion, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Roy Wesley.
This is for Mr. York.
Go ahead.
Page fifteen. Rooster's power equipment. Is cut-off saw replacement?
Mr. York?
Yes, sir.
Page fifteen.
Yeah, cut-off saw replacement, yes, sir.
Yeah, what is it?
A cut-off saw is utilized for our water department to take the bad piece of water main and cut through it.
Sounds like a concrete saw?
It's like a...
Concrete saw?
Yeah, it's kind of like a big... It's a big circular saw. It's got a diamond blade on it, and it cuts through metal.
You have a follow-up or another one?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. York. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I have one, Mayor.
What page?
Can't get by to without asking one. Page four. The two thousand dollars for ComEd.
Is that Mr. York? Okay, Mr. York, go ahead.
Yes, this is the two thousand dollars that we're paying ComEd to begin the process of getting us our transformer at the treatment plant that's needed. The treatment plant... That transformer that we discussed a couple of weeks ago that we need. This is for them to do their engineering, just like Nycor needs their money upfront to do the engineering. This is our payment to them to accelerate that program along.
You have a follow-up on that, Alderman Wesley?
No, that's fine.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Lazara?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman R. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. You have something? Yes, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Could I... Could I just have a brief... One bullet point is, what's the latest with the gas company?
Want to stick to that, Mr. York?
They proposed to beat out their...
The latest with the gas company is that we received notice from them last... It was last Thursday that they were going to begin the project on Monday of this past week. They gave us two project dates and two project numbers. One was Monday, and one was next Monday, both of them to be completed on the tenth. Also, in that same email that we got from them, there was a notation on both projects that said, "Waiting for a pocket." So I'm going to guess that that means waiting for a hole to open up in their work schedule. So we will be reaching out to them again tomorrow. We reached out to them on Wednesday and had not heard back from them yet, so we'll be asking them again tomorrow if we can get a finalized date.
Well, because the reason why I ask is that we have building of one piece of our equipment we can't start up yet. It's been over a year. And then the second phase of our building, we're paying for the heating of that building right now. I mean, we were told that was going to be installed, and I don't know if we can take legal... I don't know.
Mr. Bond, go ahead.
Well, there's really no... We're at their mercy a little bit, unfortunately. I know staff has been diligently hounding them, and, you know, the squeakiest wheel gets the grease, so hopefully, that'll happen quickly. But there's no legal mechanism for us to force their hand or their timeline.
While they collect all the interest on the money we gave them upfront.
Is...
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. York. Any other questions, Ruth? Okay. We need a motion to adjourn into executive session to review official minutes, probable litigation, land acquisition... land acquisition, and collective bargaining.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed or adjourned?